I have 5:31. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners on November 22. It's, like I said, 5:31. I would like to start off with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. If you would rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam, clear for all call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here, broadcasting from the city of Howell due to a medical condition.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is correspondence this evening. We have one, two, three, four, five, six pieces of correspondence. I'm looking for a resolution to receive and place on file.
Move correspondence, Ajax.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Ajax, support by Commissioner Gross. Is there any discussion, any questions on any of the correspondence? Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving and placing on file signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item number six on the agenda is our call to the public. Anybody wishing to address the Board of Commissioners will be given three minutes. Alls that we ask is that you provide your name and your city or township before you start. We will start the call to the public here in the room and then we'll move to Zoom. Is there anybody in the room here that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners?
Hello. My name is Yvonne Black and I live in Marion Township. And I say don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Why? Because the age of a horse is signified in its teeth. And back in the day, you could get scammed if you didn't look in their mouth to see exactly how old that horse was. The federal government doesn't belong in state and local government. And through a FOIA request, I asked of the Health Department, what statute legally authorized the Livingston County Health Department to use results of a PCR poly-chain thing, test to be used as the definition of a case with respect to recommendations, requirements, guidelines from Livingston County? And she replied stating that Livingston County Health Department uses the CDC guidelines for COVID case definition, which is federalizing our county health department, federalizing our public schools. Why is she not following Michigan law? Because she's a, we're all under Michigan law and Michigan constitution. And so then that kind of brings me to the resolution for the courts today. Another federalizing of our courts for $150,000. Why do we want to bring the federal government into our local county courts? I would just encourage you to please vote no and keep the federal government out of Livingston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Yes, Ms. Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Linda Bullard and I live in Brighton Township. First, I'd like to discuss my recent email to all of you regarding the county health department using resources to promote virus testing at the direction of the NIH and the CDC for a study. The document says it is, quote, "an effort from state and local health departments." This effort is against Resolution 2021-09156, which you previously adopted. Because this effort does not meet the specific health needs of Livingston County and this effort does not address mitigation needs specific to Livingston County. Commissioner Helserman respectfully sent me an email and, in my opinion, tried to brush it off as a third-party effort. However, the documentation from the websites and the Health Department letter itself say otherwise. It is your job to hold our local health department to the resolution that you approved and to stop this effort immediately. Please do something to stop their continued abuses against Livingston County residents. Next, I will talk about today's agenda, Resolution 2021-11181, authorizing application submission of 2022 coronavirus emergency funding grant. This grant is to use money for emergency funding related to the virus going forward in 2022 for the courts in our county. I want to remind you, there is no emergency in Livingston County. And you all know, I hope, it was you, the board, who declared there was no emergency. This resolution from the Trial Court Administrator's memorandum lists expenses that are no longer needed, such as PPE, temperature scanners, travel costs for virus testing, virus info for the public, virus barriers, virus office supplies, virus public notices, and virus employee screening. The Trial Court Administrator, Roberta Sikarsky, I'm not sure if I pronounce that right, says the funds will aid the court in response to the pandemic. Would you please counsel with her and remind her that you've already declared there is no virus emergency in our county, there is no pandemic? And would you also please deny that resolution? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to address the board? Mr. Train Commissioner Johnkier.
Good evening. Brian Johnkier, 350 West Caledonia. I wanted to speak a few words because there's an awful lot of concern amongst, as I've mentioned before, amongst my fellow department heads, a number of our countywide electeds, other department heads are listening tonight. And their concern is for how some of our fellow department heads have been treated. I'm not sure why the, I still don't understand why the big turnout tonight. My understanding is there's not something that's going to be acted upon. But social media is ablaze with all the things that Diane McCormick has done wrong. And I'd like to remind this board that your department heads are your professionals. Okay? And I've never seen one go rogue. I've known Diane McCormick for 30-plus years. And I can tell you that under no circumstances has she ever considered going into our schools and taking kids out. Even if she had, I can tell you that a number of her nurses would be totally opposed, would quit. So she could marshal six or eight or whatever, how many number of nurses she has, you know, they wouldn't get too far. They're not, they're not a group of storm troopers. Although they do like putting needles in me, I've seen. But I just want to remind everybody, and I hope this doesn't get to the point where it's a crucified Diane McCormick. Diane McCormick has had to walk the tightrope. She's had threats from both sides. And as I told her the other day, I said, sometimes the only way you can judge your job and how you've done it is the fact that you've made the extreme opposites of the issue upset with you. And I said, if you've done that, sometimes knowing the people that you've, that are mad with you is how you are able to judge that there's a job well done. And I think that's probably the situation here. I would hope anybody that has, and I don't, obviously people are very concerned about their children. I wouldn't begrudge them being concerned or unhappy or fearful that something's going to happen with their children that they themselves wouldn't have a choice in speaking up against. So I understand that.
You have 15 seconds.
But I think it needs to be done cordially and with decorum. And I hope it doesn't get down to personal threats. And I just ask this board to support your department heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? You would provide your name and township. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Nicole Colors from Hamburg Township. I'd like to address the board regarding Horning Elementary. If you don't know, Horning was shut down recently. All the students were sent to virtual learning with one day's notice. Horning Elementary is the home to 560 students and another 50 or so staff. They were shut down on the 10th for 14 sick kids. An entire school for three weeks. How many kids are absent on an average day? My guess is it's probably more than 14. Yet here we are, living in yet another dystopian manufactured crisis, using healthy kid quarantine recommendations from the Health Department to shut schools down. This is cruel and abusive to these children. It needs to stop. During virtual learning, the kids have to be online three times a day with attendance taken. If you have more than one child, this is extremely difficult. Trying to juggle this with one day's notice sent over 400 families into chaos. A lot of them have working parents. This has been tough on the Horning family. I urge you to strongly consider the purpose and the need for quarantining healthy kids. Please take a stand and end the cycle of abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to address the board?
Hi, my name's Michelle Herbert. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I just wanted to say that, you know, I can appreciate what people are saying. If there's threats being made to people, I don't condone that in any way. I just think that it's very simple. You take an oath, you have a job, you do what you're also you do and support the Constitution. Doesn't matter. There's no fence to walk. There's right, there's wrong, there's rules. Just please follow those.
Evening Commissioners and Patterson Township. I came here this evening after burying a friend this morning, and I don't get paid to be here like you do. I'm dedicated to being here. I'd much rather be having a glass of wine celebrating her life, but I know I needed to be here because this is what she would have wanted. And she's even been here and spoken amongst the board at the calls to public. I come to you as a woman, a living soul created by God with a moral compass. I'm asking each of you, as men and women, to look deeply into your God-given souls first. You know that something is not right. And as your role serving as commissioners, you need to strongly evaluate your own moral compass and your sworn oath of office to the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of Michigan. Trying to propose resolutions and pass along support to enforce public health codes are a violation of our life, liberty, and freedoms. You sit here and you pledge allegiance to the flag, who is written by a socialist, by the way. And then you get angry and avoid us or block emails or whatever, roll your eyes at us when we ask for our freedoms and our liberties. It's atrocious. But let it be known that our group of men and women are dedicating to educating public officials and holding you accountable for protecting our God-given rights, our unalienable rights, and superior and supreme laws. The Bible says, be the man, not the person. So our superior and supreme laws, if you need to be reminded, they start with the Bible, Articles of Confederation, the first Constitution of the United States of America, the Declaration of Independence, the Northwest Ordinance of 1787, the Michigan Constitution, which cannot offer less rights than the United States Constitution, and then all the treaties. That is the order. The preamble of the Declaration of Independence recorded life, liberty, property, and the pursuit of happiness by our Creator, God. All of the founding documents put God first, then men, then government, even in its smallest forms. Codes nor statutes nor rules nor corporate bylaws and maritime law, water jurisdiction supersede our superior and supreme laws of men and women and children. By you supporting these codes, ordinances, mandates, rules, and suggestions are a violation of your oath to we the people. Here you are conspiring with an appointed Health Department official who is also supposed to have an oath of office to support the United States and Michigan constitutions. Are you violating your oath of office? Shall we proceed with filing a claim with your risk management company for your bonds?
You have 15 seconds.
Because we have done a FOIA for that. We can and will write claims against your bonds. We don't want to. We want you to do the right thing. We want you to hold your oath of office and protect we the people.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom. And I see the hand raised for Sherri LaRue. Sherri, if you would state your full name and your township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Sherri LaRue, Green Oaks Township. On several occasions, members of this board have made the comment that this is a conservative board. I would ask you to evaluate that individually in answer, what do you conserve? When Paul was traveling with Timothy after Jesus's death, burial, and resurrection, he wrote to the Colossians, "Seware lest anyone cheat you through philosophy and empty deceit, according to the tradition of men, according to the basic principles of the world, and not according to Christ." I have been watching this board for many months now. You folks were elected by the people to be the voice for the people. I have watched continuously you turn over that leadership to the administrator and to the department heads or whatever they're called. Now, I don't mean to pick on you. This happens at the school board level. This happens at the state legislative level. It happens in the federal level. And the further out we go, the thicker the sludge is. I've also watched money dangled in front of you. Money is not free. It's not our taxpayer dollars. It's my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren's taxpayer dollars. It's debt. By accepting this money, you sell the people into slavery. It will never be paid off. Now, I will let you know that I am a conservative, and I'll let you know what I can serve. I can serve a biblical worldview. I can serve the contents of the U.S. Constitution. I can serve the contents of the Michigan State Constitution. As a previous speaker noted, all rights belong to the people except for those given by the people to the government. No longer can we put up with backroom conversations that dictate and create policy, ad hoc committee meetings that don't have public participation in. That's not how it works. The people take care of business.
You have 15 seconds.
Space for your time, Will.
Thank you. Next up will be Danielle Borton. Danielle, if you would state your full name and your city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Danielle Borton, Pinkney, Michigan. In regards to the Resolution Number 2021-11181, the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding, this was applied for and used in this last year. And here we are at the end of 2021. Now the state with the highest case counts within the U.S., no doubt facilitated by both the lack of mask mandates and the new Delta variant. It's imperative that the board resolve to allow for the application and acceptance of the funds for 2022. These funds will assist in covering costs of medical devices such as temperature scanners, PPE, staff overtime, testing for staff and inmates, technology for remote court hearings. It will also provide physical barriers and crowd control measures as well as supplies and other equipment to help combat and prevent the spread of this virus. In addition, this assists in limiting the virus's ability to have more opportunity to mutate. As citizens of this county, we expect that this resolution will be passed. And please allow me to remind the board and fellow citizens that the mission, as stated, for this county is to, and I quote, "be an effective and efficient steward in delivering services within the constraints of sound fiscal policy." And, as stated, your priority for this county is, quote, "to provide mandated services which may be enhanced and supplemented to improve the quality of life for all who work, reside, or recreate in Livingston County." I, as a citizen, I'm expecting you to uphold this mission. And in so doing, allow for the application for the CESF funds to protect the workers and the citizens who use the court and/or related services. With all due respect, this is your duty. We're not asking for the moon. We're asking for you all to take responsibility for what you stand for and what you accepted your position for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Lisa. If, Lisa, if you give us your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Good evening Commissioners, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm just gonna, I'll just make it very quick. This whole thing is a pandemic of fear. It has divided your constituents and the rest of our country all because false information is being spread. Why not, instead of millions and thousands and all this money, why not hold the administrative part of this, the Health Department? I mean, that's all they are, are just some admins. Why not hold them accountable? And why are you allowing them to withhold treatment? You've got ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, you've got light treatments. Why are you allowing them to suppress the treatments? Those right there would not only end this whole thing, but they would save you the millions and the thousands and all of the dollars within. This has been mentioned before. It's been put in one of the resolutions. The Health Department does not want to talk about treatment. They want to talk about how much more money can we have? How much more control can you give us? And, sorry. And then how much more can we come back to grab? Start pushing them to let loose the treatment. They're pennies per pill, pennies. We'll do a fundraiser and probably have enough money to substantiate for the whole county with ivermectin. Have them release it. That's all I've got. Please, please, consider the treatment, not the propaganda and the fear. And I hope you guys have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Anna Penella. And if you state your full name and township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Anna Penella. I'm from Brighton Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to mention a few things. First of all, I wanted to mention, my number one concern is quarantining of these children, the Health Director's involvement of quarantining. There seems to be this misconception that there's just a few vocal parents that are concerned about the thousands of quarantines. There's, I believe that if you have a child in school, you're concerned about quarantine. I know a number of parents myself who I've spoken to that don't feel comfortable to speak out against this because they're fearful for the backlash to their children or their professional careers or both. I wanted to mention, people keep bringing up masking, which is absurd. Just for comparison, we can take my home district of Brighton area schools. So far this year, Brighton has had 274 positive cases, which is a little over 4% of the students. Here on Valley, next door to us, who is completely masked, has 543 positive cases, which is 6.1% of their students. So clearly masks do not work. Back to the quarantine, though, I would like to have addressed tonight specifically the Health Director's role in pushing these quarantines. There's this idea that the Health Director is simply recommending quarantines, and then the school is enforcing them. So I would like to have it be crystal clear what the Health Director's role is in the quarantine process. Is she herself and the Health Department enforcing quarantines like their letter says? Or exclusions, which is the new fancy word? Or is she just recommending it and then the schools are the ones liable for the illegal, unlawful, healthy quarantine of thousands of children in our county? I think both of those things are very important to mention. And then I wanted to read one story regarding a student who, here, this is an impact. I mean, we could go on endlessly about the impacts of the quarantines, but this is from a parent whose son is a high schooler. Numerous times, he had to go into quarantine for being exposed to someone who had COVID, even though he already had COVID himself. He went from online learning to in-person, then back to online, and it messed with his emotions, his grades, and he became incredibly depressed and suicidal. His mother and I got him into counseling immediately, and he is doing so much better, thank God. The isolation was absolutely horrible to my son's mental health. Quarantining our children is causing more harm than good. At what point do we acknowledge that what these quarantines are damaging the next generation of kids? This has to stop. Please help us make it stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eva Helmanen. Eva, if you state your full name and your city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Eva Helmanen from Brighton, Michigan. And I have four points I want to make about the religion of public health and what I've come to find out. A, facts are not relevant. B, beliefs control the outcome. C, believers must convert others. And lastly, those of us who are not believing all this are condemned. And we're seeing it in the schools. We're seeing it, we're seeing it in all of our lives. And we're being ostracized as though the public health religion and the public health system is the end-all and be-all. Anything the government has ever been involved in has turned out to be a problem, and it always has been. And all the news reports that are out there that are being ignored by the government-funded news media states that quarantining, masking, none of these are relevant in the spread of COVID-19. I have an employee who has kids in the Detroit school systems. They have had masks all year, all year. They just closed the Detroit school systems for the week of Thanksgiving because of the COVID outbreak, which I don't even believe that it's that. I believe it's the flu. That's why they are changing the PCR testing. And my experience with the Livingston County Health Department is horrific because my son was quarantined at the end of the year last year, and they never even contacted me. But he was pulled out of school in the middle of the day telling him that he should have been sitting home for the last eight days, and we never got a notice. So don't tell me that the Health Department and the public health system knows what I, as a parent, should be doing with my child. When my children are sick, I can't. knows what I, as a parent, should be doing with my child. When my children are sick, I keep them home. When I'm sick, I stay home. The fact that people are reliant on our government and government funding for our mental and physical well-being is preposterous. So I beg you to look at what is happening here and, and, and let us make our own decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is John Conley. Uh, John, if you would state your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, uh, my name is John Conley. I'm Green Oak Township. I'm an elected trustee and Brighton Area School Board, uh, third elected term, and working in the school system since about 1980, give or take, a little bit, '85, in different capacities. Anyhow, we're at a crossroads of, uh, major proportions with what's going on with students. For instance, uh, I'll just read, I've got stacks of stuff. Uh, this leads to many children falling behind, struggling their academic work. This is referencing the quarantine and the advice of quarantine. Unconstitutional, obviously, failure to provide a proper education, also, that needs to stop. We have to provide an education. Uh, we shut down a school in Brighton Schools recently and sent home 500-plus healthy children. Now, why was that school shut down? Well, I have a document here dated, um, 11/9/21, and one, uh, medical director, Juan Marquez, signed it and recommended the shutdown of a public school. Now, he didn't recommend finding out who was sick and say, hey, can you stay home? And following the rules. He said, no, send everybody home. This is what we're recommending. Now, those students that are at home, I have letters. Uh, here's one family, uh, isolation, lack of human expression, very, uh, difficult for the kids from last year to this year, this year. And unfortunately, I know multiple incidents of depression in school-aged kids. Now, that's, that's one parent. I've got another parent who has two kids in school, and both her kids are out of the school because they shut it down. And just so you know, here, this is this, this parent, his fourth quarantine is a healthy child this year, and it's only November. The quarantines could be up for 10 days apiece or more, or less, depending when they catch the student within the cycle of the quarantine being requested. Now, the health department and Diane McCormick can say they're just recommending, they've met for the last 20 months, give or take, with the superintendents of every school district in the county and worked out this plan. I would recommend the board work with Diane to figure out what the next best steps are for our county. And very quickly, these students who are left at home without their homework, without help in face-to-face education, are actually losing ground. Many of them may not catch up. Maybe they'll never catch up, or given the extra help, they will catch up. But the issue is, why should we be going through this if they're healthy children and they're sent home? And again, when did we ever use children to protect adults? The case has been made that the, the children need to be vaccinated soon as possible, and they need to protect us adults because they can spread COVID to us. When did we put children at risk to protect adults? We have to stop it. And so I urge the board to support Diane in getting programs that stop-
You have 15 seconds.
Thank you. Get, get programs in place that stop this, if not entirely, and just stop it altogether. And, uh, that's, uh, what I have to say for tonight, and thank you, board, for your time.
Uh, next up is Kat. Kat, if, uh, you would, uh, provide your full name and, uh, city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kathleen Olson in Howell Township. I just have a quick comment that, uh, we know if you accept further funds for these measures for 2022, we will assume and believe that you're bought and paid for. No funds come from the government without strings attached, and we all know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is S iPhone. Uh, if you would state your full name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. This is Susan Tapleski from Green Oak Township. And, uh, while I concur with many of the callers and people in person this evening about ending the quarantines for students, um, I want to shift gears a little bit towards a recent study, um, data that's coming out of Vermont, where they have approximately a 91% vaccination rate, including children 12 years up and older, um, who are at least partially vaccinated at the 12-year-old age. And what they're finding there is that they're having an explosion of cases in, um, coronavirus in those vaccinated people. Um, nearly the entire state is fully vaccinated, and they're having over 300% increase in cases. So we need to take a look at this and completely put the brakes on because this is a true epidemic, a true pandemic in the state of Vermont, and they have a nearly 100% vaccination rate. Please stop the madness, put the brakes on, end this funding, do not continue to support these efforts, offer other solutions such as what was recommended, hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, in the, um, continent of Africa. They have very low rates of coronavirus, and that is because they are given these alternative medications that help prevent the spread and also help prevent the, the coronavirus from taking hold. That's all I want to share tonight, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next up is Michelle Blondiel. Uh, if you would state your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Blondiel. I'm from Heartland. Um, I just want to give a couple of statistics because I know that, you know, we, can you guys hear, hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just want to give a couple of statistics because I, I just, I, I get confused on the idea that, um, the, those of you that are going to vote for this, uh, for, you know, taking any money, or if you're going to vote on taking money, um, or if you support the nonsense of the COVID, um, protocols going on in the schools, that what a previous caller said is that you're part of the issue. Um, i- i- in the country, in, in this country, less than 350 children have died from COVID. That's not, this is, is a fact. But 466,000 children have disappeared in the United States that you don't even talk about. But you're going to try to, to protect 300, you know, from 350 deaths. In the, in the entire world, and we don't even know if this is, if related, 1.8 million people died from COVID, but yet 9 million people died from starvation. Any of those things anymore, right? You guys are so, so consumed with this COVID, but it's nonsense. They're lying. Like, everybody keeps saying, oh, follow the science, follow the science. All of the science that we're following are from people that, that, that have knowledge-based, uh, statistics. So we're not making anything up. Again, you know, i- i- all of this stuff needs to stop. It just does. And it's our taxpayer money, and we're telling you point blank, someone's lying, and it needs to stop now. So I appreciate it, those of you that, that know this is nonsense. Um, to the other ones, y- you know, y- you need to stop, and you, you need to know that we, we recognize that there are issues with how you're voting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next up is Giselle Marshall. If you state your full name and, uh, city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Giselle Marshall from Brighton Township. Um, I just wanted to say I'm a little concerned about what I'm hearing from the public. There, I think there's, there's two different realities people are living in, and one is true and one is not. But what I'm hearing here is that people are believing the false reality, and it's, it's very disturbing to me. Uh, COVID is real, and it is taking a lot of people's lives in Michigan. Um, I see it every day. I still have like 30 chest X-rays to read. I'm not finished working yet. But, um, it's just, um, I don't have time to explain everything, but it's not the flu. I just want people to educate themselves on, look up, research viruses, how viruses work, research the difference between the flu virus and the coronavirus. There is one. It looks different on imaging. It's, it's, it's real. I don't know what else to say. Um, just, please educate. I don't know. I think we need to educate the public, I think. It's just, we're, yeah, that's, I guess, all I really have to say. And that's all. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Um, seeing no more hands, I'm going to go ahead and close the first call to the public and, um, remind, um, folks that we do have a second call to the public, uh, later in the, uh, meeting. Um, next up on the agenda are tabled items from previous meetings. There are no tabled items, so we'll move on to item number nine, which is approval of tonight's-
Mr. Chair, could I please get an approval of the minutes?
Oh, did I miss, I missed something?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, item number seven was approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes, um, one dated November 8th, another November 17th, and closed session meeting minutes also dated November 17th. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move Gross.
Support.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Zajak. Are there any additions or corrections to the three sets of minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving all three sets of minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Minutes are approved. As I mentioned earlier, I got ahead of myself. There are no tabled items, so, uh, moving on to item number nine, uh, is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move Helserman.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. Item number 10 is reports. Um, tonight, we have a report on school quarantine and exclusion policy. I, um, I know that our health officer, um, is not here. She is, was not feeling well, and I'm, I don't-
No, I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
Commissioner, I'm, yeah, I am, uh, I've got a severe sinus infection, so I apologize for, uh, voice.
I, I appreciate that you would join us. I, I know you're not feeling, uh, well. So, um, what, uh, I thought I'd do, um, Ms. McCormick, was to, um, start, start off this session by just giving a, like, a brief overview of where we're at, you know, today in the county with COVID. Then we'll proceed on to having a more comprehensive discussion on quarantine and exclusion policy. So the, if, the, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, so just, you know, a general update, now that, I, I think it, it's hard not to, to see where our, our cases in Michigan, Michigan's been highlighted um, in, in the news lately, uh, and Michigan, in fact, is leading the nation, um, in the, the number of, uh, cases of, of COVID. And specifically in Livingston County, we're seeing a, a large increase in both adults and children uh, with, uh, incidences exceeding our previous surges that we had in the spring and, uh, late last fall. We're currently at about a 23% rate, which is obviously concerning, especially by holiday period. Um, and as you can, uh, see from the headlines today, our, our hospitals are also at capacity, and emergency rooms are uh, overwhelmed. And, and, uh, as I mentioned, that going into the holidays, uh, we do typically see increases in cases afterward. Um, that's additionally very, very concerning, uh, in the upcoming months, and something that we need to really take a look at and be very cognizant of. Um, we, you know, talking about the, uh, the boosters, we continue to see a high demand in our senior population and those with underlying health conditions seeking the, the boosters a- a- at our clinics and, um, in our community. Uh, the clinics that we've held lately have all been, uh, booked up really, uh, quick. Uh, we're planning a, a larger Moderna booster clinic at, uh, Chilson Hills.
Ivan, if you would, um, allow her to speak, otherwise I'm going to ask you to leave. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I can't hear that, what's going on in the room. Um, we're, uh, planning a larger, uh, Moderna clinic on December 7th. We're going to incorporate both a, a drive-through option, uh, especially for the functional disabled, um, and then a, a walk-in option. We're, we're going to encourage appointments, but for those seniors, um, that can't navigate the, um, uh, the, the internet or may not have the internet, um, it'll be, uh, available for, for walk-in. We'll be, uh, putting out more information to come, um, regarding that clinic. I also wanted to, to provide a, a brief update to the board on our efforts uh, to increase monoclonal antibodies, uh, to our high-risk residents. And there, there currently is not the capacity to provide, I'm going to call it MABS, that's the, the synonym because most people have a hard time, um, coming up with monoclonal antibodies, so I refer to them as MABS. So there's currently not the capacity to provide MABS to everyone. Um, we're in the planning with St. Joe's and Livingston EMS to see how we can expand this opportunity and the capacity. Uh, you know, unlike vaccines where pharmacies or, or healthcare providers take on a, a role to, uh, expand the capacity, it's much more complicated in, in treating an individual, uh, with COVID. It takes, um, uh, more time for the treatment and the evaluation and the follow-up, um, and also the overall environment, uh, bringing the, the, the people in, uh, to administer either the, uh, the IV, um, and/or the subcutaneous, um, uh, method. We hope to, uh, uh, assist in expanding the capacity for our residents in the coming weeks. And, uh, there again, more information, uh, will be, will be coming out. We're also quite hopeful for two additional very promising therapies um, in the pill form that, that should be coming up for review, one from Pfizer and the other one from Merck. Um, the, the studies look very promising, and, uh, we're, we're looking for authorization uh, from the federal government, uh, once they get it reviewed, hopefully before the end of the year and, and, uh, make um, additional, uh, uh, therapies, um, uh, recognized that are available out there in our, in our community. So that's what I had on the update. If anybody had any questions, I'd be happy to entertain uh, any questions on that. I did send the board, uh, an update last week, which kind of highlighted um, uh, some of the, uh, community, um, issues that we have with COVID. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If, if not, I can, um, go into some of the, uh, uh, things that we're looking at, uh, to date, uh, with the, uh, exclusion um, and, and quarantining in schools.
Um, thank you. I'll, I'll ask my colleagues if, um, are there any questions at, at this time. Um, seeing none, um, I guess, uh, Ms. McCormick, if you could proceed.
Sure. So I just wanted to highlight that the, the state, MDHHS, um, and I, and I've mentioned this before, they, they recommend, um, in their, uh, Michigan Safer Schools Guidance, uh, that the schools, uh, and local health departments work together to decide what quarantine policies work best in their community, and it lays out the guidelines for school exclusion, which, uh, consists of recommendations from the CDC. And it provides a, a framework, uh, to work within for the local health departments and the communities and the schools to work within. Um, as you are aware, uh, Livingston County Health Department, we meet regularly with the school, school leaders to view trends and discuss what is working and what needs improvement. Uh, needless to say, exclusions, uh, have been a center, uh, topic of discussion, and rightfully so. You know, looking at Livingston school-age cases, um, from the same time period last year from 2020, beginning of the year, uh, to where we are now, it was about 340 cases, um, in, in the 2020 school year from the beginning of the school year, um, to, into November. Um, a- as compared to this year, we're, we're at, uh, 2,527. So there, there is a um, significant increase in, and that, uh, is reflective in, uh, what we're seeing that's happening in the schools. I, I will say that majority of the cases are not in school transmission, uh, but still impact the schools when a child with COVID attends school. So looking at the, the data, uh, through the end of September, majority of the kids excluded remain healthy, and, uh, there was about a 2.5% uh, of the, the children that, that were excluded developed COVID. So a relatively small amount compared to the number of, of students that, that were excluded. So a relatively small amount compared to the number of students that were excluded. That, that's, which is quite concerning. Based upon this data, that was looked at, the superintendents at the end of September requested to look at a pilot for October to reduce the close contact isolation distance from six feet to three feet in order to decrease the number of kids identified as a close contact and to evaluate if there were any increase in positivity rates as a result of the reduction of isolation distance. So that was, that's looked at over the period of October, and the results of the pilot through October, we really didn't see any notable increase in positivity, and it remained under, under 3%. So, you know, looking at that data and based upon that data, the superintendents, and I did share with you the letter that they submitted, request on October 26th, to move forward, starting November 1st, which is this month, allow secondary students, the grades seven through 12, identified as a close contact, to be allowed to attend school and not be excluded with some restrictions. The primary basis for their revision request was that there was no notable increase in school-related COVID-19 transmission found during the October pilot with a reduction of six feet to three feet. And additionally, you know, there was about 10,000 students that had been excluded from in-person learning since the beginning of the school year, with the majority not developing COVID from the exposure in school. And also that the COVID-19 vaccine is, it was available for students ages 12 and above. And based upon the request that was submitted by the superintendents, you know, the pilot was endorsed to go ahead and continue on this month. I anticipate, I do anticipate that additional considerations will be brought forward by the superintendents once this data is evaluated, especially now that vaccine opportunities are available for the children five to 11, which wasn't, occurred about three weeks ago. So with that, that's kind of where we're at. We're evaluating the data and, you know, continue to work with the school superintendents and looking at how we can transition into an expanded availability for those kids that are younger.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Do you have further, Ms. McCormick?
No, no. I don't think my voice can take anything further.
Questions or comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Several questions. Good evening, Diane. Hope you're feeling better. Do you have an idea of how many cases that show up in school are from the outside? And how many are spread at school? Do you, do you keep a?
Yeah.
Do you keep track of that?
That's a good question. It's, well, we have documented about 400, which is just under 3% in school transmission.
Okay. Say that percent again. I didn't hear the percent.
It's just under 3%.
Two?
Three.
Three? That happened at school?
Correct.
Okay, so most of the, most of the spreading is not happening at school. It's happening in?
In the community, in the household. Correct.
Okay, so does that give you a feeling that you have a little more freedom to be less restrictive at school? Could you address that? Is that part of your thinking, since most of the spread, and these, these students are with each other, you know, a third or quarter of their, of their waking hours? If the spread is so small at school, what is, what has been your speaking, or your, the discussion that's gone back and forth about that being such a small percentage and being able to have a little more, a little less restriction at school?
And that is what is driving the pilots that's being presented forward by the school superintendents. You know, looking at the, most of the schools, well, some of the schools started mid-August, most of them started in September. Looking at the data at the end of September, it was, it was evident that we needed to, that the superintendents and the health department need to look at other opportunities. And that's in the month of October, where the isolation distance from six feet, which is recommended by the CDC and the state health department, was reduced down to three feet. That was in the attempt to recognize that those that were in closer proximity may be more prone if, to get COVID than those beyond that level. So we were looking at reducing the amount of quarantines. And then, and then looking at the data to see if by that reduction, was there any additional impact? Was there more transmission? And what, what was found is that it was relatively about the same as it was in September. And based upon that data, I, that's the reasoning, one of the bases why the superintendents brought forward. So basically, the students in grades seven through 12, identified as a close contact, are not excluded and are not quarantined. And, you know, as I mentioned, the basis for that request was based upon the data that, that came forward, and also the fact that the vaccine has been readily available for the students in that, that age range. And, you know, now that the vaccine is available for the five to 11-year-olds, and then we'll also look at the, the information coming out in the next few weeks. I do anticipate additional consideration that will be brought forward by the superintendents to then look at the younger kids, five to 11. So essentially, potentially, those K through 12, there would not be, would not be excluded if they were identified as a close contact.
Another question. What has been your experience of the students spreading it to the staff or the adult staff at school? Is that also, your, your 2% spread at school, does that include students and staff?
Yes, it does. It does.
Okay, so, okay. Third question, I think is my final question. Have you, among your staff or among your students, have you recorded or heard of adverse effects from, from these shots, the vaccines that are called vaccines? Have, have, have you had any people report to you from the student body such, such happenings?
I am not aware of any that has brought, been brought to my attention.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Plank.
Hi, Diane. Sorry that you're not feeling well today. My question is, is there a written policy between the Livingston County Health Department and the schools on what they need to do? Was there anything in writing that we've presented to the school to say, these are either recommendations, or this is what we need you to do? I'm just curious if there's anything in writing.
It posted on our website, is a host of guidance documents for the schools. So yes.
Okay. I think one of the things that we've heard from different people and also have seen is the message from the, the health department with regards to notifying parents that their child has been exposed, and they're given a couple of options to do. And my question is, is, it sounds like the recommend, I don't even know if I'm going to call it a recommendation, but the, the, what is said in the message seems like it's either do this or do that. It doesn't seem like it says really the words of, we're recommending, and if you choose not to, this is what the third option would be. I'm just curious if we're looking to update that message to those parents to give them sort of a third choice or make it known that this is just a recommendation? However, if the parent chooses to send their healthy child back to school, that that's something that they can do?
Well, I, that's a hard question to, to really answer. You know, and we had our legal counsel take a look at the wording too. So I think as the weeks go on, there's, there's going to be some updated language. We, you know, we're looking at those students that are, you know, the seven through 12, where they are not excluded, but they're still close contacts. And, you know, the parents are notified, so they're aware. While, you know, this is, is guidance, you know, it's in the form of, we want to make sure that we, we have a safe environment. And, you know, the schools, you know, they specialize in education, and at the same time are mandated to do so in an environment that is safe for staff and students, and, and follow the guidance that's been established. And, you know, it's, we're working within the framework and will continue to do so in a collaborative way. But, you know, and I, I, I would think that, you know, the coming weeks, you know, into the holidays and soon after, that the exclusion, unless we were, you know, experiencing significant outbreaks, would be significantly reduced.
Okay, so you are open then to sort of changing the message, I would say, to, to give, I'm not sure how I'm going to say this, but there's, you're, you're open to making some changes to maybe the, the recommendations that you're sending out to these parents, and I think it's in an email format.
You know, we, you know, we want to work collaboratively with, with the schools without putting, you know, undue burden on them. So, you know, we can certainly have discussions with the schools on, on the language, but we certainly want to work with the schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Diane, thanks for being here. I'm just myself getting over a voice issue, so I feel your pain. Could you explain what the process is being used in Fallerville schools?
Well, if, if, I, Fallerville, after we agreed, we changed the policy for the seven, grade seven through 12, the Board of Education had a special meeting recognizing that the concurrence with the pilot was for grade seven through, based upon the data and the information that the superintendent submitted, the Board of Education called a special meeting and extended it on their own to the kindergarten through fifth, sixth grade as well. And that's something that they have done on their own.
So, so they decided not to follow the recommendation? Is that the summary?
That's correct.
So as an example, if Brighton area schools decided to follow the Fallerville method and not follow the recommendation, there would be no healthy kids excluded from Brighton? Is that also fair to say?
That, that would, that would be their choice.
Okay. So just as a, as a high level, as we walk through the process, as I understand, at the beginning, the state, of course, had mandates such as mask mandates for schools. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Livingston County never had a mask mandate, did they?
No, we did not from the Public Health Department issue mask mandate.
Okay. And then once the mandate from the state of Michigan went away, it was just a recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, it was a recommendation for the, the schools and/or for the health department to mandate.
And Livingston County, again, did not implement a mask mandate? Is that right?
That's correct.
So we were following the state recommendation that was passed down from the CDC with regards to that, that mask recommendation. Is that correct?
Right, right. We put out a guidance document, and, you know, we strongly encourage all of the schools to follow the layered protocols, including masking, social distancing, cleaning, ventilation, and, you know, to have the layered approach to reduce the amount of COVID transmission in schools.
And if I understand it correctly, there's still a recommendation, both CDC, the state of Michigan, and Livingston County for masks in schools. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But as far as you know, there's, there's no mandate from any of those three levels for masks in schools, correct?
That's correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, none of the schools have mandated masks themselves. Is that correct?
They have on a limited basis, where they've had outbreaks.
So, so there's, there's a recommendation from the health department to have masks, but schools have chose either to follow it or not to follow it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
With regards to the recommendations as it relates to the exclusion, has Livingston County ever excluded a student from a school? I'm sorry, the health department? Thank you.
Taken any type of enforcement? No, we've not.
Yeah, and so has the Livingston County Health Department ever issued an order to keep a kid from going to a school?
No, we've not.
But there were some recommendations that, that, as I understood from your explanation, have been changing over time with regards to, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if I was following you, I tried to write it down. There was strictly following the CDC recommendation at first, right?
Correct.
And then we, we received some data from the school, or the health department received some data from the schools, and ultimately lessened the recommendation, if that's a fair characterization, to three feet. Is that correct?
Right. We were looking at a pilot to see what the data suggested. Yes.
And then we received some, or the health department received some more data, and again, lessened the recommendation to now only talk about sixth grade and under. Is that correct?
No, that's correct.
Okay. And ultimately, there was one school district, as I understand, Fallerville decided to essentially say, thank you for the recommendation, but no, thank you. We will follow, only sick kids excluded. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything that has prevented any other school from doing this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then my last couple of questions. With regards to guidance documents, Commissioner Plank asked you about the policy, referenced some guidance, guidance documents. Are any of these guidance documents requirements to be followed?
They're, they're, they're guidance.
So, so no one has to follow them? Is that what you're saying?
Well, in collaboration with the schools, you know, the, they're. Well, in collaboration with the schools, you know, they're issued as guidance. And then the schools, we work together with the schools in implementing.
But again, the Health Department has never required that they be followed?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other commissioners with questions or comments? I'm gonna have a few questions and a few comments. So one of my biggest concerns, while other than I'm not a fan of the quarantines, I'm not a fan because healthy kids are kept away from school in large numbers. But so that is a concern of mine, but I'll say of equal importance is who is in control? Who makes the decision? I think my colleague is, with the questions he asks, answered many of my questions, so let me just make a few comments here. The, there are some points of confusion, in my opinion, in terms of who is in control. It's clear from the discussion tonight and the questions and the answers that it is the school that decides what to do. However, it was brought to my attention just last week, there was a quarantine issued for Howell Southwest Elementary School. The quarantine was on November 18th at 12:00 PM is, or 12:15 PM when the quarantine was initiated. And it was supposed to end on Tuesday, so that would have been, what, three days later? Yeah, three days later, well, five, including the weekend. However, that same day, that same afternoon at 5:00 o'clock, a parent received a recorded message from the principal of Howell Southwest Elementary stating that the Health Department lifted the quarantine. I, that's very confusing in my mind and a little bit, it's not accurate. The message should have been, based on what we're hearing tonight, that the Howell schools decided to lift the quarantine. And I think, you know, if if our colleagues at the schools could be encouraged to use a little bit more precise language, I think parents would be appreciative. Because if a parent is not agreeing that, hey, I don't agree that my child should be excluded from school, that my healthy child should be excluded from school, you know, where are they going to turn to to appeal? You know, are they, it is my understanding that they sometimes go to the school, who says, no, go to the Health Department. And then they goes the other way around, they go to the Health Department, they said, no, it's the schools. It is a, I'm going to describe it as a governmental runaround that I am not happy with. And I think, you know, one of the things that has come out of the discussion tonight is, I think, absolute clarity, maybe is anything absolute, but I'll say virtually absolute clarity that it is the schools. With that being said, the, I'll also reference some other documents that lead a little, you know, provide a little bit of confusion, and that's the letter from the superintendent dated October 21st to the, directed to the Health Department asking for changes to the quarantine policy. That's, you know, going from, I believe that was going from a three, a six-foot close contact to a three-foot, which I applaud those that worked on that. I know there's two of our colleagues on the board that were, had worked heavily on that, and that's a great thing. And in an attempt to get fewer kids, you know, quarantined to be close contacts. But when the when the letter, as I read the letter, you know, it's asking for permission, you know, from the Health Department. So it implies that the, you know, a reader of that letter could imply or infer that it's the Health Department. I just want to make that point. So I won't monopolize too much of the discussion. I want to ask this specific question of Director McCormick. So just so we're crystal clear, so when the Fowlerville School District decided to, you know, lift the quarantines, the exclusions on all the students, it, in my mind, it means one of two things. It means that the school district, the Board of Education, has the authority to do that, and they exercise their authority. Or it could mean that, no, the Health Department has the authority, but the Health Department just elected not to do anything, not to exercise their authority when Fowlerville made the decision. From the discussion tonight, I believe it is the Fowlerville has has control, and it's not the Health Department that is, you know, allowing this to happen, even though the Health Department has authority. Director McCormick, could you comment on that?
We don't have a mandate in place. You know, we are following the administrative rules. We put a policy together. We've worked collaboratively with the schools and choosing not to implement a mandate. And the schools have the ability to, as you saw with Fowlerville School Board, to go beyond what our recommendations are.
Oh, thank you. One, quite another question. If a, in your conversations with the superintendents and your meetings with the superintendents, are you aware of what is the appeals process, you know? So this is an administrative decision to quarantine or this, the schools are exercising an administrative decision to exclude or quarantine a student. And under most circumstances that I'm aware of, due process would would require that there be an appeals process if a parent or student was disagreed, you know, with the facts of the situation, and they want a chance to be heard by a, I'll call it a neutral party. Director McCormick, are you aware of what the appeals process is?
No, and I would defer to legal counsel who's providing to maybe respond to that.
Okay, thank you. The, another question I have, and I just want to use precise language because we, I do, and I've heard others use the words quarantine and exclusion interchangeably. And my understanding is they are not the same. And so I want to compare notes with Director McCormick. It is my understanding that when you, when a student is quarantined, they essentially have to go home and stay home, and they can't go anywhere else. You know, you're home, home, you're stuck at home. Whereas an exclusion is, the schools are saying, no, you cannot come to school. But there's nothing in there that prevents the student from, you know, going out and about, you know, going to his job, going to Burger King, going anywhere else. They are not bound to be at home. They, the distinction is that they can't come to school. Is that your understanding?
I have no understanding of, you know, the administrative rules, references, exclusion, and in certain instances, it talks about quarantines, all in the same reference. And in the same situation, it was in talking, our corporate counsel that looked at our documents in September, they suggested to use the word exclusion because that word was, that was consistent with what was mentioned in the administrative rules.
Okay, all right. Question, I have a couple more questions. One is, you know, it was mentioned that there's been, you know, far more COVID positive, I'll say, tests from schoolchildren. Do you have any insight into how much of that increase might have or is caused because there's actually more testing being done? Is that?
I think that's a fair, fair statement. If you think about a year ago, we had constrained supply with testing. So there, there has been, over the course of the past several months, more testing opportunities in the community to get tested.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up questions or comments from commissioners? Looks like there are none. I really appreciate Director McCormick that you took the time and that you're sick and that you took the time to address the board and answer our questions. It's very much appreciated. And with that being said, I'm going to close this session and move on to the next item in the agenda, which is item number 11, which is approval of consent agenda items. There is one item on the consent resolution 2021-11-181. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support, Helsrum.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any discussion? Hearing none, consent agenda requires a roll call.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
No.
Commissioners, A Jack?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 12, resolutions for considerations. We have two resolutions for considerations. The first is 2021-11-182. It's a resolution requesting a correction to the apportionment report. This was submitted by equalization. Sue, do you want to brief the board on?
Move the resolution.
Oh, sorry. Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Griffith.
I'm sorry, but there were two mistakes on the apportionment report regarding the levy. It was Fowlerville fire and Howell fire. Got them mixed up, and it's, I did this report twice. I do it for you, and I do it for the state, and I apologize for this. You have to be, you know, balanced, so to speak, so that's a correction on the mileage rates. We also received two phone calls from Panic Treasures when they realized they didn't have all their special assessments levied that you approved. So I brought Green Oak and Deerfield to it tonight, along with Osceola, and they take their payoffs and they revise their special assessments. And they do that every year, so that's just kind of a cleanup on for the tax bills.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Commissioner?
Aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Commissioner, this is Rich McNulty. Could you do this by roll call vote, please?
Oh.
I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioners, A Jack?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Reader?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next resolution is 2021-11-183. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Planning Commission. The resolution before us has two names on it. Two names were forwarded out of the Personnel Committee, so it'll be up to the commissioners here to select between the two names. One is John Belcher, the other is Jason Schrock. And having the opportunity to be part of the interview process, we had really good candidates. It was really nice to see that the quality of the candidates that were put forward, it's, it'll be a tough decision, in my opinion. But commissioners will be required to pick one of the two. The process of voting will be the same as what we've used in other times where we've had two names put forward to appointment, and that is you'll say one or the other. You do need a majority, meaning five votes to pass or to select somebody that we have, only have eight commissioners here. You know, it's possible they could have a tie, which we'd have to wait till we get all the commissioners here. So anyway.
Do you need a nomination of both of these then? Would that be in order then?
Yeah, I think to make sure we've covered all the bases.
I would put John Belcher's name and Mr. Jason Schrock's name both in nomination for a vote, one way or the other.
Support.
So a motion by Commissioner Helserman and support by Commissioner Zajak. Any discussion on either of the candidates?
I would, I was part of the interview process, and we had three names. We've narrowed it to two, and all three, I think, would do a very fine job. And it was, it was a very pleasant interview, put it that way, so very positive.
Anybody else? We'll do this by roll call. So you're either gonna, when you're asked, the clerk asks you, it's either John Belcher or Jason Schrock.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Reader? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioner Helserman?
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioner Drick?
Mr. Belcher.
Commissioners, A Jack?
Jason Schrock.
Commissioner Griffith?
Mr. Schrock.
Commissioner Gross?
Mr. Schrock.
And Commissioner Plank?
Mr. Belcher.
Either we revote or we wait until Mr. Smith comes.
I would say we should wait.
Move to table.
Support. At this point, there's no, there's no need to table. At this point, you could make a motion to reconsider one or the other, but as of now, neither one has passed.
Any, any motion to reconsider? Hearing none. We'll move on in the agenda and go to the item number 13 on the agenda. The call to the public, or second call to the public. Anybody wishing to address the Board of Commissioners will have three minutes. We'll start here in the room. Is there anybody here in the room wishing to address the Board of Commissioners?
My name is Yvonne Black. I live in Marion Township. Well, that was quite a runaround by our director, so I'm a good rabbit trail follower, so I definitely was following that rabbit trail. None of this is legal, none of it. Not even the commissioners and the administrators meeting in private, creating policy that is not voted on by the elected members of the Boards of Education in the public schools. None of this is legal, and it's okay, because I get that the county commissioners in this county don't care, and so the lawsuits will be coming. I can guarantee you. It's a violation of the Openset Meetings Act for a bunch of people in this county to get together, to come up with collaborating with the Health Department, and then getting approval, and then implementing policy that is just so un-American. And I don't even understand how these people in this room do not understand any of this. Guidelines are not laws. Guidelines have no authority. She's not following the laws. If she was following the laws, there would be no problems in this community. And because our health director and the people who are collaborating with her are completely unlawful. This, the true COVID epidemic is corruption. Corruption to the point where I am just appalled that I live in a community where we have a Health Department, and we have administrators, and we have elected county commissioners who are meeting in closed meetings behind closed doors, collaborating, coming up with are meeting in closed meetings behind closed doors, collaborating, coming up with policy that is detrimental to the mental health and welfare of the children of this community and not one of you, hardly any of you asked any real questions. And I apologize for my, I'm so upset that this corruption is taking place in this county and the commissioners who are responsible for the health department are ignoring it. So it's either going to be criminal prosecution or it will be lawsuits because it's all in the works and it is coming. And I can guarantee you, thank you.
Thank you. Who is the lady in the back? Do you provide us your full name and city or township? You'll have three minutes.
My name is Laura Wilkerson. I'm in Howell and I have a son that is in the Howell School District. Forgive me, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after hearing the Ms. McCormick speak, I had to take a second and talk and say, now hopefully you guys can see the frustration as a parent in this district, kind of what we're going through. We go to the board, we're told to go to the health department. The health department says to go to the board. So it's very confusing and communication comes from both the school district and the health department. I live this every day. My friends live it, my kid lives it, and so do many other kids in the community. The biggest issue I have with the health department and funding the health department is when I look at their programs, they don't work. I've been up to the health department, we're told one thing and then we're directed somewhere else. The health department, their tests that the kids take, that they use to exclude them or quarantine them from school, those same tests that will exclude them from school cannot be used on the second part of the program where if you test positive for COVID, you don't have to be quarantined. We're using their test that excluded our kid, but on the next quarantine, when your kid gets quarantined a month later, that test is null and void. So I have a hard time trusting further, giving them more money when their programs aren't working now and it's constantly changing. We talk about temperature checks. Temperature checks, as parents, we've offered to pay for them at the school district. We've been told that's not going to work because who's going to administer them? The teachers can file grievances with their, with their unions, so they're not going to do it. So there's, between the politics and living this and seeing that nothing's staying the same and we're working within a broken system, why are we going to keep funding something that's broken? Doesn't make much sense to me. So please think about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room here? Seeing none, I'll move on to the Zoom portion of the call to the public. And next up is Ms. Judy Dobbinmeyer. If you state your name and, or city and township, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Judy Dobbinmeyer and I'm from Genoa Township and I am appalled at hearing the words healthy children being quarantined. We are more than a year and a half into this pandemic and people still don't understand that you can appear healthy but still be asymptomatic and be spreading the disease. That is the purpose for quarantining so-called healthy children. You can spread the disease when you yourself are not sick. And I would hope that people would correct this misstatement that was made multiple times. That is why people who aren't sick themselves can be spreading it to others. We know this, this is the science. And at this point, people are willfully ignorant if they continue to not understand this. It's just one of the many misstatements that have been made tonight. And it's so disappointing that we have to continue to live in this pandemic because people cling to things like ivermectin that does not work and spurn things that do work, such as vaccines. Thank you for your time and from now on, I wish you would underscore that people who appear healthy can still spread the disease to other children and make them sick. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Alisa. If you state your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Alisa, you should be ready to unmute yourself.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Alisa Davis, City of Brighton. I wanted to begin by saying thank you to the commissioners that took the time to ask the questions on really the authority level coming from the health department. And really what it boils down to is they can issue guidance only and that mandates are not law. The other thing that I've really been noticing is this really is a pandemic of fear. I think both sides have been withheld certain information and between the confusion and the suppression, it really has gone awry. So here's some of the thoughts after listening to Ms. McCormick that I thought might help if the health department put in practice. First of all, when the health department states case statistics, please have them actually break out the percentages of the cases that are in the hospital or being reported. Are they vaccinated or are they not vaccinated? That would really, if they're all not vaccinated, then that would really help us see and vice versa. Next would be, please require the health department to show peer reviewed and case studies on all of their recommendations, really publicly for, for all of us to see. That would really give us some, you know, traction to say, okay, I see this, I see that. You know, that would be beneficial. Also, have the health department really show some hard evidence on how they know for sure where anyone has contracted this virus? Because to just make assumptions isn't fair. I think that's what's been done all along. And then also have them prove that asymptomatic individuals can spread. I'll tell you, I've dug on this a long time and I've never found one study, one, one medical journal that has ever shown an asymptomatic person can spread the virus. And then also please have them prove that the tests actually work. I've seen so many recalls that it really has given us cause for pause. And if the test, all these tests are being recalled, how are you discerning that there's even a case out there? And then lastly, I heard Ms. McCormick say that always got to wait for these therapies. So I have done research on this and the pill formats that are coming out are basically synthetic versions of ivermectin. So ivermectin does work. There are countries out there that have proven this. Okay, thank you very much.
Tanya's iPhone.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, if you state your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Tanya DeFever from Handy Township. The one question I have too is where can we find the pilot program data that Diane was talking about? And I'm incredibly confused because I'm not understanding how we're allowing our school boards that are not trained health professionals to make decisions for our students' health. It has never historically been that way. Why would it be that way in the middle of a pandemic? Also, I did want to say in response to a question that was thrown out there, that hospitals do in fact show clear data of the percentage of vaccinated that are hospitalized versus unvaccinated. Michigan Medicine does an excellent job, but there's a ton of data out there on that. And so I'm just hoping that we will continue to allow our health departments to do what they need to do and to stay out of their way. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Lisa R. If you state your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Lisa Rosmarinovich and I'm from Hamburg Township. And I want to agree with one, an earlier person who spoke about this being such a corrupt pandemic in terms of COVID money being tied to making sure that rules are followed that the federal government wants followed. And I think tying money to compliance is flat out wrong. Additionally, case increase, as the director said, was because of increased testing. And I recently heard that these at-home tests that the health department have been giving are being recalled because of the false positives. That's another issue that we really need to talk about as well as the other PCR tests that have been class one recalled by the FDA because of false positives, but yet they let them continue to be used until the end of the year. My guess is as good as yours as to why. Asymptomatic don't spread, as the last two, two speakers ago also said, I've been doing a lot of research. I was in cancer research, I know how to research. There is no proof that asymptomatic spread, but there is proof that vaccinated spread. And there is also proof that vaccinated are the majority of people in the hospitals. Just look at the article from out east, the nursing home that 87 out of 89 people were vaccinated and there were nine deaths associated with that or eight deaths. The exclusion policy, all of a sudden we have a change in terms. And it sounds like what the federal government's doing with changing the term of what vaccination means. So we've moved from quarantine to exclusion because quarantine's illegal. That's an issue as well. And then lastly, I'm just going to follow up with the fact that Mount Brighton is now requiring any guests 12 and over who want to eat while they're skiing have to show proof of vaccination. Think it's wrong. Our sheriff said that he would not enforce any type of, of these types of mandates. And when I contacted him, he said that business has the right to do whatever they want. I think it's wrong and I'd really love the commissioners to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like the last person will be Ken Youngman. Ken, if you state your full name and city or township, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ken Youngman and I live in Green Oak Township. Based on what I'm hearing tonight, I just want to share some things that I've come across recently. First of all, my 95-year-old mother is in an assisted living home in Jenison, Michigan. 89% of the population has received the vaccines, so they're vaccinated. However, a new COVID outbreak is taking place in her facility. She's quarantined and I probably won't be able to have her over for Thanksgiving. But the unvaccinated, or the vaccinated people are getting sick and dying in her home. The vaccines are not protecting these people. The vaccines do not work. They are not effective. In doing some research, many virologists, vaccine experts and many doctors are calling the vaccines dangerous. The VAERS data confirm that vaccines harm and kill people, many thousands. Even the inventor of the mRNA is sounding the alarm that these so-called vaccines are dangerous. Many experts are now calling the vaccines bioweapons. So I don't think Diane McCormick is a bad person, but she's in this system and bioweapons are used for war and our nation is being attacked. The FDA and CDC are lying to us. Corruption and money are what this program is about, not public health. Low-cost treatments are being discouraged. Low-cost treatments that work like hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, new nasal sprays and a new chemical called chlorine dioxide has just had a book written about it and a study come out. In Bolivia, the cases of COVID dropped dramatically when chlorine dioxide was used. Now, for years, the FDA has discouraged the use of chlorine dioxide. I believe the primary reason is because it's very cheap and you can make it at home. There's a new book out called Bye Bye COVID. I think it's only available in Spanish right now, but it'll soon be released in English. This book outlines the use, safety and effectiveness, and I say highly effectiveness, of chlorine dioxide in treating COVID. It is also, it also addresses the lie-based objections that the FDA has been using to discourage the use of this very low cost and readily available treatment. So I would recommend to the commissioners-
You have 10 seconds.
-that when this book comes out in English, Bye Bye COVID, that you get a copy and give it to Diane McCormick.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and close the call to the public and looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Helsrum.
Support, Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or adjourned?